Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, February 1st, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Marchowska.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also President Clerk Soul.
We have a quorum for tonight's meeting. First up is the President's Report. I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Heather Cusma to the Historical Commission, the term to expire in 2025.
Seconded.
Motion by Trustee Mateo, seconded by Trustee Koss. Any discussion on the motion? Not. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marchowska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
And at this time Clerk Soul will affirm Ms. Cusma's appointment.
I, Heather Cusma.
Aye, Heather Cusma.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Historical Commissioner.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Historical Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside.
To the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you, Heather and her family, for letting her volunteer in to serve on the Historical Commission. Heather's got an incredible background in museums and history, and I found out in talking with her, she's a native Hoosier, so she's got that advantage, too. So thank you for your service to the village. Next, on the President's Report, I would just like to go over upcoming village meetings. February 8th, the Preservation Commission will meet right here in Room 4. February 12th, the Sesquicentennial Ad Hoc Committee will meet in Room 22 of the Village Hall. February 13th, the Landscape Advisory Commission will meet in Room 22 in this building. And our next meeting is scheduled for February 15th, Village Board of Trustees here in Room 4 of the Village Hall. Manager Francis, report this evening.
I do not ever report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Resident comments on non-agenda items. If there is anyone in the public who would like to address the board on non-agenda items, now's the time to do that. We will also allow and ask for comments during agenda items, which we consider each agenda item, and you'll have an opportunity then. But this time is set aside for anyone who wants to address the board on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to do so? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Soul, please read the consent agenda.
Approve voucher list of bills, February 1st, 2024. Approve Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, January 18th, 2024. Review and File Department Monthly Reports. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Historical Commission Regular Meeting, November 20th, 2023. A Resolution Waiving Competitive Bidding and Authorizing Village Manager to Enter Into Various Purchase Orders for Fiscal Year 2024. A Resolution Approving and Authorizing Acceptance of a Proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited to Perform Part-Time In-House Engineering Services for the Village of Riverside. A Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement By and Between the Village of Riverside and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for the Design, Construction, Operation, and Maintenance of the Commuter Lot 8 Green Parking Lot in Riverside, Illinois. A Resolution Authorizing Execution of an Independent Contractor Agreement for Plan Review and Building Inspection Services with Lakeside Consultants and Authorizing the Village Manager to Issue a Purchase Order or Orders Regarding Same. A Resolution Approving Revised Agreement with Waste Knot Incorporated for Food Scrap Composting Services. And an Ordinance Amending the Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024 and Ending December 31, 2024 for Capital Expenditures.
Thank you, Clerk Soul. Does anyone in attendance in the audience or any trustee want any item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Some moved?
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, seconded by Trustee Evans. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marchowska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Department Board and Commission reports. Are there any Department Board or Commission reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to pending business. Berkeley Road Traffic Update. Director Buckley, please provide us with an update.
Thank you, President Pollock, members of the Board, and Manager Francis, for allowing me a few moments to talk about some of the Berkeley Road traffic safety concerns that we've been dealing with and working on with the residents in that area since August of 2018. Today, I just want to provide a brief discussion on feedback I received from two residents that I reached out to, who were pretty vocal and influential in helping us work on some of these different things that we've done in the area there. So when I did reach out to them end of December, one of the residents said they've seen a noticeable decrease in traffic turning off of Harlem Avenue and proceeding west on Berkeley, which is exactly what we were looking to do, although they did note that they would get an occasional vehicle pull out of Starbuds Parking Lot and make a left onto Berkeley and proceed west on Berkeley. One of the things they suggested with that is to add a second no-left-turn sign to the left side of the apron as you pull out of Starbuds, as a second reminder, so it will be one on the right-hand side, one on the left-hand side, as another means of letting people know not to turn onto Berkeley and to head out onto Harlem. I also spoke with another resident who said that they've seen, they're very happy with how Starbuds has been operating. They're happy with the lighting that's there because of increased safety, and even more so the cameras that are now in that area. So we are going to continue to work with them and to, you know, little pieces at a time, and see what we can do to increase the safety in that area and make sure that that area is definitely kept safe. We will be putting up our traffic counter there, probably within the next 30, 45 days. It's been pretty cold and the weather hasn't been very good. We want to get good, accurate reads when we do these things. Next week looks pretty good, so it might be going up next week, just so we can gauge it a little bit better, making sure that the things that we are doing there are working. So we'll continue to monitor that area. We do have patrols up there that actually sit in different spots around there. I actually go up there every once in a while just to monitor things myself and making sure that that area is kept safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Buckley. Any questions or comments from the trustees? Well, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Evans.
Well, I got neighbor feedback about some of the lights shining on their house behind them. Is that who you spoke with, or?
No. But that neighbor that I did speak with that was happy with the lights, said that when they originally put the lights up there, there was an issue with it going across the street or into the neighbor's area. And they said they put deflectors on the lights, and I did go up there at nighttime also, and the light is not cast out as far due to those deflectors. But I have not spoken to that resident directly. If you do have that resident's information, please get it to me, and I'll definitely reach out.
Sorry, if I may. I know that Planner Siren had been communicating with the resident, I believe that you were speaking to, and so she might be able to provide some additional feedback relative to your question.
Sure.
We received a complaint about the lighting at Starbuds and about the commercial building where Shining Smiles is located. We addressed both of those concerns, and the lighting on the Starbuds building is in compliance with the village's ordinance now, after the shields were in place and we're working on one remaining issue with Shining Smiles.
Okay. Is there anything that we can do about people smoking in the parking lot?
We have definitely increased patrols. I did talk to some of the residents about that also. We are doing periodic checks through that parking lot, looking for people not waiting to get home to smoke what they bought, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the trustees? Thank you, Director Buckley and staff, as this is a really good example of how this village works with its residents to solve problems, and it's credit to the trustees and especially to staff, so thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the youth center and remaining facility needs. We'll start this off with Manager Francis. This was on the last agenda, and at the time, I think we all quickly realized that most of the trustees, all the trustees, were not on the board in 2018 when we had Williams Architect do an architectural study or space needs study. So our intention here is first to bring everybody, all the elected officials, up to date on what we've done in the past and what we still need to do and what our options are in the future. So I'll turn it over to Manager Francis to give that overview of the history of our facilities and facility needs.
Thank you. So one of the things that I started off with, because I think it's important to, I had mentioned very high level about the Public Works Facility and the items in which we, what had been done in the late 90s, early 2000s, but with the help of Clerk Soul, he went through our old files to figure out that particular timeline, so we can figure out where we were 30 years ago and where we are essentially today collectively with addressing our different facility needs. So there is an old engineering and essentially facility assessment report from the late 90s related to village facilities. And so from that, in the late 90s, the Board had discussions, evaluated different options on how to tackle the different facility needs, and at that point in time, it was decided that Public Works would be constructed in Riverside lawn, that essentially there would be the public safety facility needs would be addressed in short term as kind of a stopgap while the bonds paid were going towards the Public Works Facility. And then, once those bonds were paid off, basically, public safety and other facilities would be addressed. And so we went through that process in which the Board made those different decisions on what to tackle and how, and how it was funded and supported, and ultimately how that contract was then awarded, which brings us to the end of 2022. And so Public Works was then constructed, and then we essentially had to pay off those bonds over 20 years. Those bonds have been repaid. We're in the very last installment related to that. And so the Board had asked for some additional data as it related to the facilities, and so I just kind of outlined when Public Works was done, when Parks and Rec Facility was addressed, when Admin, Finance, Community Development, how we reworked some things, and so that particular timeline as well. I also included within the Agenda History Sheet the square footage that was noted as existing for public safety facilities and the youth center, what is recommended, and then the differential of that that was noted in Williams' report. One thing I will note that Williams did when they came out at the direction of staff was, based on our facilities, we wanted to make sure we were maximizing our square footage. And so in addressing the public safety needs, if something were to be reconstructed, that it would have a lot of common spaces, for example, locker rooms for public safety, so police and fire wouldn't have their own separate locker rooms. Having, you know, a common lunchroom space versus separated out, but that can only be achieved with a major remodel. But their numbers in which they put in for their square footage contemplates those shared spaces. If we were not to do those shared spaces, those numbers, if you noticed in the packet, the second attachment to the Agenda History Sheet noted the targeted range, you'll notice that they didn't put in the maximum targeted range because of contemplating those different shared spaces. And so I also wanted to provide just some additional facts related to our facilities. So I noted the youth center houses Riverside TV, administrative offices for the Fire Department, located within both the youth center, Old Public Works Building, and the rubble garage are also storage for police, fire administration, community development, and the finance department. While it's not significant space, it is space that is needed for onsite storage. And so that, those files are typically permanent forever, keep forever kind of files, where when we get FOIAs, we need readily available access to those documents, and so that's important for them to be onsite. Also located within those buildings is our backup generator that powers our essential services during a power outage. While COMED has gotten better since burying certain primary lines, we still experience power outages, so we would need to maintain that backup generator during demolition, reconstruction, what have you. The youth center also houses a training and workout space for the police and fire department that is also made available to other village staff, and it's very common in other villages to have that space and actually to advocate for police and fire wellness, that's almost an essential service that the village could, provides to their employees. The youth center also acts as an operation center when the village is managing a large-scale incident. Typically, that's where police, fire, or if we're having a major event where we need to have a meeting with all of those that will be participating in that particular event, that's where we all gather because it's large enough to accommodate more than eight to 10 people. It also acts as a classroom for both police and fire department trainings. The benefit of having that onsite training is you're not having to spend each individual firefighter or police officer to do offsite training. So it's multifaceted, the use. One of the things that occurred to me after our last board meeting is I didn't really do a great job of noting some of the opportunities for that particular site, and so I'll go through those now. One of it is, one potential opportunity is to create a space for the Consolidated Dispatch Center and an Emergency Operations Center. Those two would go hand in hand, and there's potential for Grant to pay for some, for a good portion of that. We could also create a path that connects the Swinging Bridge to Swan Pond. I've heard that multiple times from many residents. I've heard it multiple times from also our Preservation Commission, who feels that that's a very important project for the village to complete at some point in time. Create a meeting space for board meetings and commission meetings. Create a space that can be rented. One of the things that we didn't necessarily discuss last fiscal year when we were creating that special revenue fund with Parks and Recreation is, as a special revenue fund, they can issue debt for, but that debt has to be backed by user fees, and it can also be backed by property tax if for some reason they don't collect enough user fees. But typically, you have sufficient fund balance and reserves to make sure, as a fiscally prudent community, that you're doing it the right way. And so if there was a thought that the village board wanted to create the space and it to be managed by Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec would then derive that revenue, but that revenue would be utilized to pay for the debt to build that space. And so that could be a great opportunity for Parks and Rec. They've done a great job with recover, paying off the loan that they have taken out for Quincy. They've expedited that repayment schedule by approximately, I think at the last board meeting I said, about 25 years. So they will have it paid up within five years versus the 30 I believe we had initially laid out. We could also create a parking lot with permeable pavers. Once again, that could be a grant-eligible expense. Potential to consolidate Fire Station 1 and 2. Create a studio for Riverside TV, so therefore, in many communities, the studio is adjacent to where the room is where you're having the meeting, so they're not having to break down equipment and assemble every time there's a meeting that occurs. Everything's built into the room, which can make their work a lot more efficient as well. And create spaces that meet the needs and requirements for our public safety department, which brings me to another item. I also did note some of the more immediate expenses of that if we do not start doing things related to the youth center, that the village would have to start evaluating, are we going to incur these costs? And while most of them are very centric to the youth center, which right now is not code compliant, some of the other items that we did not touch upon was the significant needs for the fire department. So to illustrate that, I actually took a couple of pictures today related to, this is Fire Station 2. So we no longer have a paid-on-call operation, we have a paid-on-premise. So typically, we have three to four firefighters that stay overnight in those bunks, but if a call comes out, you can't have more than one moving out of that space at a time. It's maybe two feet in between the bunks, and some firefighters, because it's not the best accommodations, opt to sleep in recliners. And so that, that's a problem that needs to be addressed. Additionally, both in Fire Station 1 and 2, there are not separate sleeping and dressing quarters for male versus female, and that's problematic as well. When a male and female have to get up in the middle of the night, they have to get changed into their equipment, and so basically, we're creating what could be an uncomfortable situation, and that, that is not, we should be figuring out a way to accommodate these individuals because, quite frankly, we're a part-time department. They are full-time elsewhere, and so they're choosing to be at Riverside, and so we should be making sure that we're providing at minimum appropriate sleeping spaces. You'll notice in that kitchen, I actually asked for the measurements of that entire area, it's nine feet by 26 feet. So it's small. Additionally, at Fire Station 2, there are no showers. So there was a fire that the fire department responded to this past week to assist a neighboring community. They had to come over to Fire Station 1 to use the one shower we have in shifts. That's a problem. The other problem is if we decide to install a shower, there's no space at Fire Station 2 to do that at this point. And so those are some significant issues. Obviously, the sleeping quarters and just the living space is woefully undersized for our current operation. When it was built, when we were paid on-premise department, while it wasn't ideal, it was sufficient because people weren't sleeping there overnight. Our medics' quarters also at Station 1 do not have separate sleeping quarters, and there's only one bathroom that has to be shared by male and females. And once again, we have more female medics slash firefighters than we've ever had, which is wonderful, but we need to make sure that we're providing appropriate spaces for them to do their, their job and also to be at. I wanted to also note, Station 1, their stair leading up to the medics' quarters is not code compliant, and so while we haven't had any incidents of slip, trip, or falls on those particular stairs, it is a concern, especially when they're getting up in the middle of the night to answer a call. Also, the fires adjacent to the fire base at Station 1, while we have an exhaust system, there's still exhaust that goes into the space, and we have offices adjacent to it. And that's similar at Station 2, so it's an issue at both stations. Typically, you don't necessarily have offices adjacent to where your fire base are because of this hazard and issue. At Station 2, there's poor insulation, and due to the proximity of the train tracks, the building-sleeping quarters vibrate when trains pass, which creates a poor sleeping environment for our firefighters. And so, as I mentioned, staff's goal is to ensure that whatever the Board decides related to facility, that we're utilizing all of our spaces, that there's not a space that is empty for a period of time. We want to maybe make, making sure we're maximizing those spaces. And that's why when we did the Williams, we tried to look at consolidation of different things. If the Board opts for, and President Pollock will run through this, but I just want to make the statement of, if we opt to rehab what we have as existing, keep in mind, we'll have those two separate sleeping quarters, lunch space, locker rooms, et cetera. And with that comes the long-term maintenance issues that we've been dealing with, with having all of those separate spaces. So I just wanted to provide that long overview, but also kind of illustrate some of the challenges if we're not going to be addressing, then we should be utilizing funds to address how to work within our existing means, which could be challenging.
Thank you, Manager Francis. Yeah, there's a lot to consider here. This is not an easy, easy process or discussion or decision because they're, it's very expensive and will challenge our resource, financial resources, and it's, there's a lot of options to consider. Our number-one priority this evening, though, is to bring the Board up to date on all that we've done to this point and what the issues are that need to be addressed, get not only the trustees, but the general public thinking about this and providing questions and, and comments on how we can proceed. There are lots of options, unlimited number of options. I'm going to go through five that Jessica and I had kind of bandied about, five of the most more obvious options, but, and again, we're not looking for a decision tonight, but to the extent that you can give us any direction, that would be great. So option number one is postpone the decision and continue patching the buildings. That's basically what we've been doing for the last several years. Of course, we were trying to pay off the Public Works, and we've accomplished that, so now it's time, time to move, move on to the next step. If we were to postpone a decision and continue to patch the existing buildings, we would be, we would burn through that 1.2 million in bonds that we issued last year, which have to be spent in the next 30 months, but even right now, there's a half a million dollars in repairs that are needed just to continue to use the buildings as is, as we have been using it. So, you know, the concern there is throwing good money at bad, and so, but it is an option, and so we threw it out there. Option number two is find another property and build new. We've looked at that. Staff and previous boards have identified properties in the past, brought them out in public, and so far, nothing has borne any fruit. Looked at a couple of different properties in the village, but for a variety of reasons, they didn't work out. Obviously, buying property costs more. We already own this property, so there's no additional cost in acquiring land if we use this property, but of course, tearing down and building new, you know, as we found with the, and I'll come back to this, as we found with the you know, as we found with the, and I'll come back to this, as we found with the Williams Architects' study in 2018, it's very expensive, I think it was minimum $25 million, and I'm guessing that's gone up quite a bit in six years since 2018. Option number three, tear down and replace, that's basically what I've said, is tear down and replace the youth center building, that's the Williams Architects' proposal, and again, we're talking $25, $35 million. Sure, there's probably some value engineering that could be done, but we're still looking at a really big number for tear down and replacement. Option number four is a two-phase approach that Jessica and I just kind of started discussing today, and that would be to tear down the existing Fire Station One that's adjacent to this building, replace it with a larger building, and consolidate Station One and Two into that space, and then consider the youth center as a Phase Two of the project, and potentially using the youth center for Riverside TV, community gathering space, riverfront improvements, et cetera. And then option number five is rehab and build a third floor to the youth center, which would accomplish everything that tear down and replacement would accomplish, it would give us plenty of floor space, but one would think it would be cheaper than tearing down and replacing, but we wouldn't know until we actually had a consultant do a study for us. So, and if you'll click the last one there, there may be other options, as I noted, but I thought it might help the discussion to identify at least what we see as the five most obvious. And if there's anything I missed you want to add, but otherwise, let's start the discussion. And I should also, I want to also mention that a concurrent objective, last meeting and this meeting and going forward, is to get this issue into the public realm, let people know we're talking about this, make people aware of it, so that when we do have to decide and spend money, our residents, our community will have had the chance to think about it and know about it, and hopefully give us feedback over time, so. I'll stop with that. Any questions, comments? Trustee Mateo, start us off.
Well, thank you, Manager Francis, for pulling together all that information, it was really helpful, and including the 2018 report, which I haven't read since 2018. It just strikes me that our facilities are inconvenient, they're dingy, they're dirty, but more importantly, they're not safe. And we can't postpone any longer, we have to do something, whether it's tear down or, you know, we'll have those discussions, but we have to do something.
Other comments?
I'll say, I mean, I just, I want to thank Director Tab and Chief Buckley, because, you know, being the new girl on the block, I got to go around and see the facilities, and to say that I was shocked was not, does not even cover it, I, you know. I think we are all grateful to our first responders in just about every situation, but when you see that they choose to be first responders in this town and kind of live and work in the situations that they do, it makes me even more grateful to them. I think that those pictures didn't do justice to how bad things really were. And I, you know, the more I've thought about it, the more I feel kind of embarrassed that, you know, we're asking them to do that, and I think that I totally agree with Jill that, I'm sorry, Trustee Mateo, that we can't postpone, this is something we just have to address, and yeah, we can't, they can't keep living like that and working like that.
Others? Trustee Gallo?
Yeah, I'll concur, this has been kicked down the road for long enough, so we have to make a decision and get to it. No more procrastination, it's going to be more and more costly, it's unavoidable.
I'd just like to reiterate what I said during the last meeting, which was that I think that, for all practical purposes, as much as I, you know, appreciate, you know, historic preservation, these structures are not functional, and we do need to start over again, and we need to do something that meets the needs of the community, you know, not just now, but looking forward into the future. And, you know, as some of the surveys that came out of C4 have indicated, and that some of the strategic goals, you know, survey, I think are going to show as well, you know, we do have public safety needs that have to be addressed, and we also have community space needs that need to be addressed. So I think building something that is flexible and energy-efficient for the future, maximum flexibility is what we need, and I would like to see, you know, public space incorporated into this design, preferably taking advantage of those stunning river views. But I think there is a way to work with our limited footprint if we also contemplate the Fire Station and rubble garage as part of the plan, not just the youth center, the existing parking lot, all of that footprint. If we think creatively with using all of that, I think we have a chance to build something really amazing.
Trustee Evans?
Yeah, I agree with everyone, everyone's comments. I would want, I definitely see the need, you know, for improved fire department and police department facilities, and I would also prioritize community space, free space, space that's open and free for young people to come and sit with their friends or visit or just do homework or just free space. I just would prioritize all three in the same way.
Thank you.
I think we can all accept as fact that our facilities here are lacking, and I agree with Trustee Cos. My favorite day as a trustee was the day that I got to tour all the facilities, right? It's very interesting, it's just, I still consider myself a layperson. Very interesting to see behind the curtain there, and I agree that it was shocking, it is still shocking. And I think the question is, at all times, we understand there are limited resources in terms of bandwidth and financing and mental capacity to deal with projects, right? And so I think we have to, I think that's the question, is now the time? And if it is the time, what is the right plan that sees to our needs for now and also our needs in the future? So my interest here would be, I think we're on the right path, I think resurfacing this conversation now is important. I am interested in how we plan to increase community awareness around the issue. I have done some, you know, polling of people I see around town, I think people are largely unaware of the issue being in front of us, they're also very unaware of the actual facilities themselves, right? The pictures, I agree, the pictures don't do it justice, it's not something we're proud of. I think that's going to be important to tell the story, because we may get feedback that why do we need this, right? And so we have to really find a way to tell that story. So I would like to understand, and maybe there's not an answer for that tonight, I'm not a community engagement person, not a communications person, but outside of maybe my kids and a handful of curious individuals, I don't think we get a lot of viewership in these meetings. I think if we learned one thing from our DISC golf discussions, it was despite many agendas across many boards and commissions, people just aren't aware until the rubber meets the road. And I don't want to put residents in that position, and so I think we need to find a way to communicate with our residents, it's got to be something north of putting it on our website, and I think, you know, I'd be very curious to hear the results of the survey, I know that we gave residents a token amount of information in the survey and allowed for them to give us feedback, I think that's important. But I think as we see community awareness, we want to make sure that we are educating people on what the actual conditions are, right? That picture is very impactful. If it's not obvious to you, the picture that you show, I mean, the picture with the bunks and the chair and that kitchen, that's the same room, right? If you're not paying attention, those look like different rooms, that's the same room, right? Nine by 26 is a very small space. So I think we need to educate people on the actual conditions. I think residents are going to want to know what we've done to consider alternate sites, why we think other sites aren't available or aren't optimal, why this site is the best or isn't the best. I think people are going to want to understand, they always want to understand costs and financing structures and what that means. I think residents are going to be interested in the timeline, what construction looks like, what inconveniences that might create. I did get questions from the community on whether there are ecological concerns with the potential tear down of older buildings being there on the river and what that might look like. So I, my personal view without much resident feedback is option one seems like a poor decision, but I don't know where the other, which one of the other decisions are right, and I want us to have important feedback from the community on this, and that, I would like to do that quickly, but that does take time to do it in a meaningful way.
Jessica?
Thank you.
Like 10 years ago, there was a video that was done of all of our, at that time, on YouTube, right?
In last, the last packet, there were links to all the different videos that we've done for all the facilities.
So people know that, hey, this is what it was like years ago, and now it's gotten, that's, I think, one part of your objective to let people know, these are, this is even 10 years ago, it's horrible.
Maybe we can have a community meeting on it, it's hard, this is a community meeting, right? It's hard to get people to show up to a community meeting about something that hasn't happened yet. They would tend to want to show up when we've already got the plan and we've already committed, and then they don't like the decision, and I get that. So I'm giving you a problem here without a great set of solutions, but I think this is an opportunity to be creative, engage our residents, explain the problem so that we can get by in.
I think part of the problem with that is we have nothing to show them. We have the videos already show them saying, hey, we have all these problems, but at the other end, we don't, you know, I like to show, here we have this problem and here's our solution. If we don't hire Williams to create the solution, then we're just kind of going in circles with, we have these problems, but we haven't fully addressed them over the past 30 years, and it's gonna become an even larger, it has already within the fire department, with just female firefighters and medics sleeping in the same space as males.
That's the trailer size, isn't it?
What is that?
That's the size of a trailer, that room.
That is, that's, so that's in Fire Station Two, and that's also Fire Station One, the medic quarters are not separated.
I agree, but I don't know what we can have Williams do, looking at these options, including the sixth option, which is are there other options, right? I think without giving them some direction, tell me I'm wrong, but if you're asking for direction on one of those, I don't know that we know that yet.
Well, so I think what we need to do is have staff reach out to Williams Architects, get a proposal to look at these options, and come back to us, see how much that's going to cost, it's just for them to consider all of these options, and maybe, you know, if we are comfortable spending that money upfront to have them do that, then we'll have information, we'll be able to say, hey, tearing down and replacing is twice as much as rehabbing. We don't, I don't know if that's the case or not, but we won't know until we have a professional look at it for us.
But will they, sorry, I mean,
No, please.
As part of that process, will they be able to, because we don't have the feedback to say, maybe we hear from residents that we're okay with something, we're okay with addressing the first two of the parade of five horribles here, right? Like, is Williams going to be able to offer those kinds of options to say, okay, option number seven here is we can address these two or three needs in this location, or two needs in this location, right? Are they, can they have a broad engagement like that? Otherwise, we are naturally committing some funds and naturally narrowing ourselves.
I'm not sure. Jessica, do you?
So what, I guess, if we're saying we want, we're not sure of what we want to do and we want to get public feedback, then I would say we engage Williams and say, I agree with President Pollock that it's probably not the best utilization of our funds, but we're talking about a much more protracted process that could go on for the next five to 10 years with the feedback and all of that, and so therefore, then we should just go and we should start addressing the fire department and the police department-related issues, and have them come up with something, which is what we did in early 2000s, which was the Stopgap. And so, and that's where we're at essentially at this point in time. So I, because Williams already did the study and said, here are your different options, here are your different space needs. And so they can certainly take that and cobble it, but if they don't have guidance from the board as to where they want this footprint to be, it's really hard for them to say, okay, here's how we make a compliant police and fire department with all the different spaces that you need.
Understood. It's a hard problem. I will challenge a little bit that I don't think it'll take 10 years to get feedback and make a plan, and I certainly would not, that is not at all what I'm asking to do. Transparently, I was not on the board like almost everyone else here. I don't fully grasp why other sites are not optimal. I believe you, but I do want to understand that, and I have a hard time answering that when residents ask me. And so, and the last study we had was five years ago, and so I want to find a way to help you move forward, but I do think we need some community engagement on feedback on that, because if it's overwhelmingly negative, we have to find a way to tell the story in a different way.
So just to give the current board a little bit of feedback of alternative sites that were looked at, one being, because we do own land around Public Works facility, that was not viable, because first of all, it's very removed from the middle of town, that would potentially have an impact on your ISO rating, which keeps your homeowner's insurance low, because we have an ISO number two, which is unheard of for a community of our size with a part-time fire department, which is great, that means our fire department's doing their job. And so that was evaluated, we'd have to do remediation on the site, and because of flooding and other issues, it wasn't viable. We then looked at the property along First Avenue, across from the high school, that's a challenge, because that's in floodplain, not floodway. It also is not owned by the village of Riverside, it is owned by Cook County Forest Preserve, and they would not give us property. They would sell it to us potentially at a premium, but we would have to provide them some green space of ours. And so they became uninterested in that conversation. And so at one point, a board member had suggested perhaps along Harlem Avenue where Harrington Park is. Obviously, that wasn't a viable option, because that's our green space and that's a heavily utilized park. There was another suggestion about demoing Fire Station Two and building something new related to that block over on Pine. The challenge with that is that, once again, it's not incredibly deep, and you'd have to buy a number of homes, which would be probably in excess to $1 to $2 million at the onset, and you haven't even built anything or addressed anything. And so that item, plus there is some significant infrastructure, which would make building on that site challenging as well, and so we eliminated that as an option. So then we returned back to the existing site and said, okay, we've kind of come full circle with all the different options, what can we do? And that's when Williams was tasked with this.
There was also a suggestion to put it on the north side of Burlington, which the board did not favor, because it's not a good use of space, and then Parkway as well, right?
Yes, thank you.
But that's also a floodplain and forest preserve.
Well, one of the things I've been thinking about this week, is that I've been looking at this, is for as long as I can remember, people have been talking about, you know, even taking police and fire situations out of the equation, people have been talking about that youth center, and just what a shame it is that that youth center is sitting there on probably some of the most beautiful property in Riverside, and, you know, the public can't fully use it anymore. I mean, I shudder that the fire department and the police department are using it, but also that, you know, that building doesn't, you know, what you all are saying, that building does not take advantage of the views, and you know, over the years, I've heard people talking about making it into a youth center, having like basketball courts that have that whole back wall. center, having like basketball courts that have that whole back wall being glass so you can see the river and stuff like that. And I think that people have gotten very excited about these things over the years and that to me talks a lot about things, some things that are more, they're kind of more fluffy kind of things, you know? And like if they found out that actually, I, I, you know, again, not having talked too much with people about it, but I think if people found out that yes, we could build something beautiful like that, that people could use and would utilize the river front there and it would address a, a huge need that we have in the village for, um, both our police and fire departments. I feel like that could be something that people could get more excited about than spending a lot of money to just try and, um, do something that addresses the police and fire departments and not having something that the village can also use and utilize. Uh, that's, I, that's just anecdotal, it's not factual, but that's kind of how I see it.
Trustee Evans?
Yeah, I, I agree and I think, um, trustee Marsh Ozga was sort of getting that too where, um, the public would have, they would have a stake. You know, they would have something in the end too. That's a big, I would say that would be a big draw.
Yeah. I, I agree. When I, again, most of the people I've talked to on this issue over the last couple of years are completely unaware of it or their initial reaction is, ah, it's on the river, like that's beautiful space. And so if there's, if Williams can design a compromise that gets you what you need, but you put a basketball court in there, they're all line up to, to, right, so they'll like show up at the meeting, right? And I'm not saying that's the right use, I mean, I, it seems great to me, but, um, I would love to see something that honors the space. President Pollock mentioned riverfront improvements, I don't know what those would look like, but to the extent that is possible, I think that might get you where you want to be, get to compromise, get of something we can be proud of and use for 50 years.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
I, um, really like the idea of phasing the project, the ultimate, um, construction of this multi-faceted, multi-use facility. What, could we get a proposal from Williams to do some schematic renderings that would look at the whole footprint and incorporate, you know, two or three preliminary renderings that we could then bring to the public? That would, would be different use options along that whole footprint? Because that, we don't have that yet. And I'd just be curious as to how much, um, you know, something like that would be, I mean, it would not be fully fleshed out, but one would say, all right, here's what would happen if you situated your, you know, police and fire things here and you had a separate entrance for this and you had the community, you know, multi-story glass facing the river, you know, with a separate entrance and you built elevated over the existing parking, so you're maximizing the, you know, space footprint there for offices and meeting space. You know, I, I think if there were two or three different approximate designs that we could then show to the public, that might get them more excited about reacting to something. And then we could go from there.
Is there a way to find out what would be, had to be on homeowners' property taxes if we were to purchase a building for $30 million?
If we, if we were to purchase?
If we were to, if we were to spend $30 million on a whole new building, how would that affect the typical?
Yes, so we would, we would have to run those numbers because it also depends on, the duration of the bond repayment too.
Okay.
But yes.
That would be helpful.
Couple of things I wanted to add and it was alluded to and one is, you know, I doesn't have, not particularly relevant maybe, but it's important to me is this riverfront, I mean, this space is, to me, it's sacred space. There was talk years ago, people would talk about, oh, put a hotel there or banquet facility or something like that, which I get why people would think that and I'm not criticizing anyone, but the more I thought about something like that, the more I thought, no, this, this has to remain public. It would be, to me, it would be inappropriate to turn that into private space. And if we went elsewhere and built a new building somewhere else, now we've got this white elephant, what do we do with it now? Uh, I suppose we could still turn it into public space, uh, but, but we'd still be spending money on that. But I, I, I don't know why I felt the need to mention that, but that's important to me in my decision-making here. So I guess the, I, I, from what I'm hearing, it seems to be the appropriate next step is to, is for Manager Francis to talk to Williams Architects, get their thoughts and ideas, see if it's practical, feasible, cost, what the cost would be. To have them not just specifically look at tearing down and replacing like they did in 2018, but look at all these options and tell us, uh, you know, from a very high level, pros and cons of those, of the different options. And, and get a price for doing that and then we'll come back to the board and say, do you want to spend this money to do this?
I think that sounds great. Before we engage them, I assume the timing will work out. We'll at least have some token feedback from that survey, at least that could
Yes.
Sort of nudge Williams in one direction or other, depending on the feedback. So as long as that timing works out, I think that's, we should take advantage of that.
Yeah, and, and I mentioned in opening and in closing, my initial remarks was that an objective here tonight and last meeting and going forward is to get this issue out into the public realm for discussion and feedback. You know, you just keep, keep it on agendas. We've do, done press releases, uh, we can put some of the information on our website and encourage people to look at it. Uh, I think you just take a shotgun approach to informing the public about this and hope that, you know, different things resonate with different people and we can get the community thinking about this and, uh, and not surprise them when we decide we're going to have to spend their money.
So just to confirm, what you want me to do with Williams is you want me to get a proposal for them working through all of these different options or the phased approach and getting the renderings?
I like the phased approach.
Well, I, I think we, we have number three. I mean, that's the 2018 study. So it's really the phased approach, it's really number four, number five.
Well, but number three, if I remember, doesn't, doesn't talk about some of the really juicy things that we've talked about tonight, right? Like what riverfront improvements will look like or could we slap a basketball court on top of it? I just, I don't, I, I don't, I don't think you can give a vendor like that as broad of a mandate as here's six, here's a scatter shot of six options, right? But I, it might be worth, I think if I could put words in trustee Marsh Ozga's mouth, we're looking for like a, a preliminary step, a little one, like show us a picture. We don't necessarily know what it could look like inside, but give us something to show the public that it could look like this and it could have these things in it. How do you feel about that? Or it could look like that, you know? I, I know that's a broad mandate, but seems like we're maybe want to take a baby step on a couple of different options that will generate ideas and get feedback.
You know, I do remember a rendering of a big ugly yellow building they wanted to put up there, which was hideous.
It was just a box.
It was just a box.
Because we didn't pay for actual sketches.
Yeah, we're going to need something that's more aesthetically pleasing.
But, but that did, that 2018 study did look at, uh, uh, the riverfront and it looked at, it had a pathway connecting the Swinging Bridge to Swan Pond and had some features like that.
So, if I may, um, so we, I can certainly go back to Williams and say, we need some renderings to get some ideas, but what they're going to ask is what, what am I incorporating? Like I need to, they need to know kind of square footage. Are, are we saying, it, it sounds like we definitely would want something with a public meeting space for residents, teenagers, just the, the general public alike. We need space for public safety, RTV, but I've heard a couple of different other things thrown out there. And so for them to give me a quote on pricing, I just need to have a little bit more focus on, are we talking about like a workout center? Are we talking about basketball courts? Because that kind of changes and how high, what, what are we expecting? If they can make it work in a smaller footprint, do we only want to go two stories, three stories? Do we want to try to go to four stories? Those are going to be some of the questions that they ask because that's, that's going to potentially change the look and the feel of the building too. But if, but they have to have a general idea of what your wish list is because then once they price out your wish list and we're like, eh, it might not be workable, then they can scale back and change the renderings based on that. Does that make sense?
So if Fire Station One were torn, torn down and rebuilt, two stories, three stories, then it could have all the housing needed, offices perhaps? Maybe just not workout space? Is that what we're thinking? Because I think this is what we would need to tell them, we're imagining.
Well, I would say that you would want to keep the, the workout space. I think more, so they have, they have already kind of the dimensions of what's needed to do all of that. And so that, that's actually the easy part because they've already done the report and the evaluation and stuff. It's really them knowing what other items the board wants to be incorporated as potentially part of a draft design because then it, it can, they can figure out, okay, what this will look like.
And if we're going to have public space, that would be separate from our new Room Four, right? That would not be considered public. So those are two things. The RTV studio, another thing. The training and workout space possibly. So that could all go into the old youth center footprint if Fire Station One can go up. Williams had suggested, um, a parking lot east of the Swinging Bridge. The board at that time was not in favor of giving up green space. Is that something that we want to revisit?
It hurts a little, but we should at least look at what it looks like. Right, I, I think that's the stroke, I'm sorry, we're not giving you a direction here.
No.
It's hard for us to say, I think psychologically, we understand, we shouldn't ask them to give us a carnival and a police station and a basketball court and, right? Like that's not going to be a great spend of money because they're going to come back with a $100 million design. So I think we're looking for that interim step with all of our nice to haves, at least with a place to start.
Okay.
Or what is possible
Okay.
That meets most of the needs here.
I think you're joking, like we've been joking about a basketball court.
Yeah, why do you keep saying basketball court?
People want, we do have to say, coming from spending a lot of time in Parks, in the Parks and Rec, um, board, having an indoor basketball court, I think, to me, it seems like something we should definitely explore. It's something that we talk about all the time on the Park, in the Parks and Rec board. I'm not saying make the whole thing a youth center because that's a whole different animal, but having our own dedicated space for youth recreation, I definitely think we should at least look into that.
That's a nice offering to the community that might be wondering what, everybody wants their thing, right? I, I, I agree, I know maybe it sounds frivolous. I don't, I'm not as close to the needs for a teen space. I know we have a space like that in the library, there are a lot of teens there, so maybe we need more space. I'm not as close to any of that, very close to the need for basketball because...
Well, and it can be used as a volleyball court, I mean.
Adults ask me about it all the time, why we don't have space.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know if that's even, is that a ridiculous request? We have no frame of reference.
So one, one of the things that I spoke with Ron about was, you know, there's, there's opportunities too, as we're looking at creating this space. Granted, a lot of our residents utilize Loyola as their workout space, but do we create a larger workout space that can be utilized by staff at no charge? And maybe residents at a lesser, at, at a fee, but more nominal and offer non-residents? Because then it opens up potential opportunities for Parks and Rec to have personal trainers. Another thing that Ron and I talked about is if we're creating a meeting space and it has a kitchen, that opens the opportunity for Parks and Rec to have cooking classes. And so there's, this opens up other opportunities and once again, if they're utilizing the space, that revenue that's derived from those different classes or lessons can be used to pay off bonds or debt for that particular purpose. And so, but it really, you know, we need that feedback from you to go back and say, okay, Williams, this is what the vision is. And then I go back to our financial advisor for bonds and say, okay, this is what it looks like in totality and this is how we're splitting it up for special revenue bonds versus general obligation bonds. And I know I'm talking a whole bunch of financials, but it, you know, then we start to figure out, how do we split this up to make some of these things a reality for the village?
I would say until we see the results of the survey, I would not be inclined to support a really big gym for public use. Because we don't have space, we don't have land.
Well, I just, uh, one more little thing to add in, another wrinkle is that there's a lot of talk about like having a 15-minute city where you're meeting all of your residents' needs, you know, within walking distance. And, you know, there are so many, I, I, I won't say there's so many, but there are a number of needs for health and wellness and just community that people leave Riverside for sometimes. And to, to have a place that really people can gather and, um, utilize and feel like they're having spontaneous social connections, um, those are the more, you know, valuable kind. And I think if we can give the community something, you know, along those lines, that, it, it'll be a good move.
Well, I think we, I would like to have staff proceed with contacting Williams, get their thoughts on it. They, we're talking about what they may or may not be able to provide for us, well, let's ask them and see and see, you know, what kind of assistance they can give us that's a little bit broader than, um, than what we did in 2018 or considers other options and then come back to the board in two weeks and maybe even have them come here and talk to us about it.
That's a good idea. Do you want a consensus on that to approve that expenditure?
There'd be no expenditure yet. We would just simply, uh...
Just a conversation.
Just, yeah, we would just have, uh, you know, if there, if, just a consensus to have staff go ahead and start talking to Williams Architects about the options. I'll get, I'll get to public comment in just a second, thanks.
I would say as we're educating our neighbors, these buildings that we're talking about potentially tearing down are 75 to 100 years old. Keep that in your pocket.
But are they historic landmarks?
Sorry?
Are they historic landmarks?
No.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Go to the podium, please, and give us your name.
I, I'm Norman Shanker, I have no skin in the game at all, but I'm just thinking that if you have the 18 survey already, you should probably have them updated with 2024 prices because you'll probably be shocked
Right.
As to what's going on.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this, uh, issue? Uh, any other, uh, comment from the trustees? If, if not?
I just would like to thank staff for the work done here and the work, you're, um, you're fearless in not letting this drop and I appreciate that and this is a hard one and it, and a lesser village manager would just say this is too hard and walk away. So I appreciate the work that you've done and continue to do to advocate for your staff who are the people in these spaces.
Thanks.
Seeing no other comments, questions, we'll, we'll move on with that direction. Uh, new business, uh, discussion on onsite parking for new residential units, planner Cyrus.
Thank you. The purpose, the purpose of this discussion is to get your responses to the two proposals that you have in front of you. The two parties who requested your input can then, um, decide whether or how they would like to proceed with the applications and go through the standard process and they're aware of the fact that your responses are not any kind of guarantee or approval or disapproval of what they're proposing. I'd be happy to answer any questions about what's in the memo and Mr. Worster and Mr. Shanker right here to answer any questions you might have.
Trustees, uh, if, should everyone have a chance to review it? I think they're primarily looking for direction on the Quincy Street Arcade Building and the issue of leasing parking in Lot Eight, is that correct?
That is correct.
The other property is, is subject to zoning approval process.
Correct.
I don't know that there's much, if anything, that the board can weigh in on, on that, because it has not been to planning and zoning, and, and the only thing that would come before this board would be a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. But any, any questions or thoughts on this?
I guess what are, what are you looking for from us?
Sure, sure. Basically to get your responses to the proposals as they're written in the memo.
Okay. So do we like them? Do we not like them? Do we think they're a good idea?
Whatever your reactions are to give, to give the applicants or the, the interested parties some sort of direction in deciding whether they move forward with the applications and how they want to approach that.
So it sounds like they need 18 spots, but they want 20?
So for the arcade building, yes. They would have 18 parking spaces for the apartments. They are asking for 20, there would be eight onsite garage spaces, 10 spaces in Lot Eight for the residences, and additional 10 spaces in Lot Eight for the commercial uses that are in the building. So they'd be asking for 20 spaces total in Lot Eight.
And there's just so many numbers of spots through this whole memo. Can you just tell me how many are already leased?
In Lot Eight?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Let me go to the attachment. So that's page 501 with the map.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the picture is super helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that, yeah. I just got it up too, so you can see the current uses of the parking spaces down in the left-hand corner there. So the spaces in blue are permit parking, and red permit parking for businesses, and then the beige color is First American Bank parking.
May I? Are these?
Yes.
Okay. Can I jump in?
Yes, please do.
Try to whip my terms sometimes. Um, what is the, I, I believe I recall that we were monitoring the use of these spots. Weren't we getting some feedback on, most of them were leased, but how busy they were? Am I conflating my many parking lots?
No, no. The, this is definitely the gold coast of parking lots within the Village of Riverside. And while all of them are rented out, there isn't, the, the utilization tends to fluctuate. Most residents typically, once they've purchased or have received one of those spots, they do not let them go. So we've had individuals that have been on the waitlist for multiple years awaiting parking there. And it, it has all to do with where Metro stops the train, because that becomes really convenient for those, if they want to wait in their car, and then they can just go up the stairs to enter the train.
And remind me, where were we on getting Metro to park at our station?
So Metro would actually have to extend the platform, and so while they have listed that as a capital project in the future, there's no specific date of year assigned to it.
No, we're nowhere. Okay.
So essentially, if, so we would just be leasing it to the, the developer for the same price that we would lease it to a resident? 200?
I think the price would be, to be determined, whatever price we are willing to, to lease it for.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, and we did, the, the board talked about this in closed session sometime, because under the category of, of sale or lease of property. And so I, I think we're just looking, the staff is looking and the, the developers looking for confirmation whether or not the village is willing to lease those spaces for, for this development, rather than their current use, which is for commuter parking. And as Manager Francis said, this is the prime spot for commuter parking, but we have excess parking elsewhere for commuters. We're not short of, you know, anyone who's displaced from here would have other opportunities for, for leasing parking.
Do we have data on the, how much the business, the red spots are being utilized?
I'm not aware of any.
So I know that it was being collected, given that we have a staff member out on medical leave that was tracking that. I don't have that readily available.
There's nothing there.
But that utilization fluctuated as, as well, because most that were utilizing were taking advantage of the on-street parking that the, the board had allowed flexibility in for those different business owners or businesses that were on Quincy.
Would we move forward with our, we've been talking about parking improvements, parking lot improvements there.
Mm-hmm.
So what would...
So as what was approved this evening on the consent agenda was the agreement with MWRD. So we would be moving forward this, this spring with doing Lot Eight. And so any maintenance would, if the board elected to lease certain spaces for this particular development, that would have to incorporate any type of maintenance costs and things of that sort. So it would still remain our, our lot. They would just be leasing, because you have to remember that this is actually on BNSF property. And so that was one of the reasons we had to extend our BNSF agreement, was because MWRD would not lock in our partnership agreement for the funding to, to do this area and pavers if we did not have a longer agreement with BNSF.
Yes.
So of course, we would want to hear the recommendations of various commissions, but I'm intrigued by these proposals, and I appreciate the creativity that they're put into it to try to make it work. A question for you, Planner Siren, can you remind us, the current, so you said all of the permit, commuter permits are full. There's a waiting list of, I think you said 11. Where would these people park if they had to move? The current permit holders.
Oh, the current holders. Sure, and some of the other commuter parking Lot One, notably.
Right. Which does have space.
Does have space, yes.
Okay.
So I think that's really what we're looking for here, is what Trustee Mateo was saying. Is this a non-starter, leasing those spaces? Obviously, any final decision, you'd want more information, such as how much are we leasing them for, and, and things like that. But if you feel like it's a non-starter, then, you know, that's one thing, but if you feel like it's worth further consideration, then I think the, the developer could proceed with either, either their zoning entitlement, or they could proceed with a contract to, to be presented for leasing the properties, which of course would be subject to the zoning entitlement. Is that fair?
Yes.
Trustee Clarity?
I would say, my view, it's not a non-starter for me. I would like more information. I would say, maybe because I don't have enough information, it feels like a lot of spots, but I, I don't know if I'm right in that assessment. Right. And we, we hear a lot about parking in the village being sparse, and so I am supportive. I'm supportive of the project. I'm supportive of finding some way to achieve some parking and entertaining a lease. I think we just want to do the work. Is that, is that helpful, where we're trying to get?
Yes, exactly, yep.
Same, yeah. I want to open the conversation.
And planning and zoning can discuss that, whether, through a variation, maybe they don't need as many spots.
Yeah, the actual proposals of what, thinking about doing in the spaces are, are really interesting. I was, I enjoyed reading about them and stuff like that, so, and like Trustee Mateo said, creative coming up with this. So, yeah, I would like to hear more.
So, yeah, I'm very excited too about the possibility of improvements to the arcade building and leasing of that building, and it's an exciting opportunity for, for the village. Of course, the proof is in the details, so I think the direction is that the village board is willing to consider leasing those spaces, but we would need more information before we make any final commitments or decisions. Is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
The other property, I don't know that there's anything for the board to really talk about, the Harlem Avenue property.
No.
Other than FYI, there, it sounds like that developer will be seeking to add residential units, and to do that, they will need either offsite parking, or they will need parking variations. And of course, that is the purview of our Planning and Zoning Commission, so we'll wait to, if they want to proceed with that, then we'll get a report from planning, a recommendation from Planning and Zoning at the appropriate time.
I really like the idea of adding garden apartments in those, in that space.
Yeah.
I brought up that, just like, that seems like a great idea to me.
Public comment on this? Do either one of the, I think developers are here, if they want to make any comments, are welcome to do so at this time.
I'm Barry Worster. I'm a construction manager and a resident of Riverside, and so although there has been a, a substantial amount of time spent with Ann working on these parking, I never realized it'd be as complicated as it is. It sounds like you folks, it sounds like you folks need more time and, you know, just to research the parking end of it. And obviously, we...
Excuse me, excuse me, Matt, which property you're, you're representing?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is regarding the arcade.
Okay.
Of the arcade building. And so, obviously, we have a proposal that, as far as expansion for apartments, that we would need this parking for that to, for that to move forward. It's as simple as that. So at this point, if you need more time to discuss the parking, then let's take the time to, to get to that point, then we can find out how receptive you are to the concept of the expansion of the apartments. We can defer that to, you know, a later date, till you're comfortable with where you're at with your parking.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm an architect in town. I have office space in the arcade building, and I'm working with Barry trying to put something together. So this parking is an important issue. Obviously, you're all aware that you need parking spaces by zoning, and it just makes logical sense. So this is our first step. I think it's a great opportunity for our community. And by the way, I live in Riverside also at 274 South Court. I've been there for 20-some years, so I'm happy to be actively working on this project with Barry in my own community and in my town. So I think, I'm glad to hear that you're willing to entertain the idea, because it's all about the park, and we understand that it's a landmark building. We're obviously very concerned to make sure that this project is very successful. The whole purpose is, at the end of the day, there'll be more residential apartments in our community, which I think helps the dynamic of, you know, how we live here in Riverside. So just want to say hello. Pleasure meeting everybody here, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Norman Shanker. My partner and I own the building at 3408 to 3412 Harlem. The bottom of that building is three retail units that we have tried to lease out for nine months with no, with no success, basically because there's no traffic. You know, it's on Harlem, there's no seeming, seemingly flow there. So our plan is to build two ADA compliant, three-bedroom apartments, and the tax services next to us is building that's owned by Joe Johnson, who's a longtime Riverside resident, and he has been willing to lease us three spaces in the back of the building, which we could then either move other tenants over into those spaces and have the ADA compliant buildings have spaces right behi, right behind their, their prospective entrances. And we just wanted to know if it was worth our while to get, you know, plans and drawings and everything, because it's a substantially, you know, it's a substantial investment on our part.
I, I, we appreciate the position you're in, in terms of spending resources on it. Unfortunately, we really can't say anything until we hear from the public and hear from our Planning and Zoning Commission, because these are all, they're all zoning matters. You know, in the other case, we're considering leasing property.
Right.
Which is a different matter than zoning. But when it comes to zoning entitlement, I, I would not want our village board to get ahead of our Planning and Zoning Commission, or the neighbors who may have thoughts and opinions about it as well.
Absolutely, and I understand that. I just wanted to come here and present my case, and if you all said, it's a horrible idea, you know, you shouldn't move forward, then that would have made it a lot easier for me. Right? So...
I, I think I can speak for the board when I say that we're open to creative ideas to add value to any property in this village.
So we'll make the investment, and we'll try and move forward.
Yeah.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on this matter? None? Um, new business, I'm sorry, that's all we have for new business. Let's see, Trustee Reports across Community Climate Collaborative Update, Trustee Marcia Hoska.
Yes. Well, I would just want to thank everybody who came out for the open house that C4 held last week. We had pouring rain and relatively sparse attendance. I think we had about 20 people come. But it was a chance to really, you know, engage and get some feedback on the latest permutation of the draft for the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. We have more work to do though, to engage with the public on this, so, you know, we will really put forth some additional, you know, creative efforts in the next month or so, so that we can get additional feedback and bring this to the board for final review.
Thank you. Trustee Evans.
Yeah, I just wanted everyone to know that the Riverside Friends at the Library Membership Drive is kicking off for 2024. Look, keep an eye out in your mail for your, your mailer, your request from the library to join, to join us. There's no minimal, be, any donation will make you a member, and please support Riverside Public Library.
Thank you. Any other, Trustee Gallegos.
Okay, on behalf of Alliance Club, so in a community full of volunteers, I think we can all name several people who would be worthy of being honored as Distinguished Citizen Award and E-Person of the Year. So anybody who wants to write a letter of nomination, take consent to Alliance Club or to my address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other reports from trustees?
I should have mentioned it during the commission section, but I've been attending Parks and Recreation Board meetings, and the survey that they're putting together is coming along, and the consultants that they're working with are going to be here in Riverside next week, meeting with department staff and looking at all the facilities, so hopefully it'll be released in sometime in the spring. That's the plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. No other reports? We do have need for an executive session this evening to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee or legal counsel, and also to discuss probable imminent or pending litigation. The board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place. I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion's made.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Koss. Any discussion on the motion? No? Uh, Trust, uh, Clerk Sol.
Trustee Marcia Hoska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.